Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular School Board meeting of school edition for page eight, two. I'm calling the meeting on Monday, March third at 5:00 PM to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business will be approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, second by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, who we got today? Six zero. All right, we have no citizen comments this evening. We will move on to fiscal stability and looking for approval of our consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. On to item number six, collaborative connections, and Superintendent Eric Olson will be talking about the gifts.
Right, before the resolution is read, I'd like to briefly share what we have in front of you here today. Dahlheimer Beverage, $500 for fishing team sponsorship. Gene Haas Foundation for $2,750 for the Monty Python's robotics team to pay for the costs incurred in building the robot and participating in the competition season. This includes materials, travel, entrophies, shirts, safety gear, et cetera. Also, another one for the fishing team, Fane Companies, $400 to go towards their expenditures. So I have three wonderful donations coming to you today to help student programming across our district.
Effort be resolved by the Mont cell School Board number eighty-two to gratefully accept the following donations. Dahlheimer Beverage, $500 for the fishing team sponsorship Jean Haas Foundation, $2,750 for the Monty Python's robotics team to pay for costs incurred in building the robot, participating in competition season. This includes materials, travel, entrophies, shirts, safety gear, et cetera, and the Fane Companies, $400 for the team sponsorship.
Second. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Again, just super grateful for our local companies that are constantly giving back to our community and programs like this to make us better. So, thank you. All right, moving on to item B, building staff meetings budget update. I'd like to bring up to the podium Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder and Superintendent Eric Olson.
All right, first, I'm going to just do a summary sitting, and then I'll meet Tina up at the podium. But today, we have a unique presentation. We're going to mesh together three very important presentations. The first one is Tina and I and what we've been doing across the district. We feel it's really important for school board members to feel that through the budget season comes, when you're doing realignment, it's really important for everybody to hear the message that we've been delivering across the district. And then along with that message, we also want to make sure that as school board, we have new school board members. And just as reminders for all, that this is an important process. It's part of our fund balance policy, but is not only cutting and reducing, but also knowing what your options are for potential revenue. So our financial advisors will do a presentation, Ellers', and we have Matthew Hammer and Beth Downs here from Ellers Incorporated. And then we also have just a reminder of the effective governance, that we have John Edison, our legal team member here, to bring forth just the roles and responsibilities of board. So it's just a good, it's, once you see them all together, you'll really understand how they flow together and why we, Tina and I, really think it's important to be doing all three together. So without further ado, Tina will be at the podium. Budget season starts in November, and then it concludes at that first meeting in April, when we have to announce by contract any certified staff that won't be back with us. And so it's hard to stand in front of staff and be able to share that, but it's important to give them the transparency and the face time that they deserve from the Director of Business Service and Superintendent. So we think it's also important for you to feel
There we go. All right, so the school buildings have goals, departments have goals, I have goals as well. And one of them is to have constant communication and consistent communication about our finances, some school basic one-on-one information, not only to staff, but to our families and the community as well. So during this process, we created an IS-882 budget outlook flyer that went over some of those school finance basics, as well as give us a budget status update. Also throughout the year, we have newsletters that we give to staff, and I call mine the magic minute. And all of my newsletters this year has had a financial topic, whether it's enrollment, property tax levy, budget update, just a financial topic each month for people to learn on. And so with this presentation, we'll go over some of those basics on that flyer, as well as our budget update. So where does our revenue come from? The largest source of our revenue comes from the state, seventy-six percent. And the next largest sum is property tax revenue. And both of those sources directly tie to student enrollment. So it's very important for us to keep an eye on enrollment, as it's a driver in our revenue budget.
This slide was a key ingredient to tell a story that even me being here for almost twenty, actually twenty years this year, I guess you don't realize what the big picture is until you put multiple years together. So a lot of times, we do a three and five-year look back. For this one, we did back to 2003. And what this showed us, and it was able to have some, I was able to have some talking points with our staff, is enrollment-wise, we are about the same as we were over twenty years ago. And that's a scary thing when you look at what we've built for programming, our, the programs that we've built on the backs of all of us in the district and the school board, is quite impressive. And it's, you know, when you look at the creativity at each of the buildings and the programming that we're putting forth, whether it's career pathways, whether it's STEM, whether it's nature-based, whether it's online, we've built these things in short order in the last few years. And we're really proud of those things. We're proud of our special education department. We're proud of the delivery model. But as Tina just said, the number one source for income are your per pupil units. And if you're decreasing at the same time where you're trying to be competitive with school district, we run a school district that's often very challenging for our administration, our staff, because our revenue sources haven't kept up with the desire and the need to really keep up with our neighbors and keep up with very strong programming for, most importantly, our students. And so when we showed this, we, I even, it was in the flyer, and that flyer went out, and a few staff members that actually emailed argued with me, there's no way, look at the box stores, look at, there's Firehouse, there's Chipotle, there's Starbucks, all these stores are going up. But that doesn't mean that they're bringing in students. And so there's no doubt that we continue to work with the city. And so some pieces of this, there is some reprieve on the horizon, where we know that there are two to three hundred building permits going up in the next three years. That's going to be awesome. But that doesn't account for the years when there was four building permits for single-family houses, or fifteen, and when neighbors are putting up hundreds of those second-tier houses. So it's been interesting, and we really felt like this was a slide that really gave us the talking points to show the staff really why we're in the financial situation and cycle that we're in. This becomes the imperative story that needed to be shared.
So how do we spend our money? The majority of our budget, nearly eighty percent, is salary and benefits. We are a very labor-intensive industry, so our largest investment is in our staff, who either directly or indirectly support our students every day. The remaining funds come from transportation, curriculum, technology, or just facility operations as a whole, to make sure we have a safe and effective learning environment for our students. So with lower enrollment projections, our revenue budget is expected to decrease. And if we don't adjust, our expenses will outpace our revenues, creating financial challenges for our district. Proactive planning and thoughtful budget adjustments will be necessary to ensure long-term financial stability while continuing to support our student needs. So we met with the Budget Committee on January twenty-seventh to go over different forecast scenarios. And with the most conservative revenue assumptions, we wanted to target our minimum eight percent fund balance at the end of next year. We have a fund balance policy where we try to be within eight to sixteen percent of our expenses. So that was a target that helped us in the next budget alignment direction.
Along with the budget process, we've been pausing on this slide and really doing some teaching. This is a slide that has to happen every year. And this is the you can pay for what you can afford slide. And so while it's part of the budget process, it's not part of the budget realignment. And it's really important for us to understand, this is what we do every year. And we look at, so as a former elementary principal at both Eastview and Pinewood, one of the things that we would work with, with the district office every year, is how many FTEs you could have in each grade level because of, you know, to create a standard of classroom size. And so there'd be some years where I maybe have eight sections of first grade, and the incoming kindergarten that would not support that number, because maybe you were lower, or maybe you were higher. So you already know right out of the gate that that grade's going to have to potentially reduce. And then Tina's working her magic on the forecasting of kindergarten. And usually kindergarten, the people who register, aren't equating the number of staff that you end the year with in kindergarten. So you might have to reduce one or two. So even before I even got to pass first grade, I might have to reduce three staff members. Because that's what we could potentially either forecasting afford, or what we could afford by what we know in the grade level behind us. And so this happens at all buildings, all elementary and secondary buildings. We pause every year to see what we can afford and how many FTEs we can afford before we have, before we go any further with the budget process. So we reset this knowledge for all of our staff to understand that just even if we fix our budget problems, this slide does not go away, because there's going to be some intricacies in each grade level of bumps in class sizes, or decreases in class sizes. And I'm talking the overall graduating class size. So we've seen numbers in the high threes, we've seen numbers in the, you know, the two seventies. And so that's a, you know, can be a hundred student difference between incoming kindergarten to an outgoing graduating
So we took the budget alignment, round alignment into a couple phases. Round one, we tried to focus on identifying any inconsistencies we saw across the district, as well as look at overall operations to see where we could be more efficient. This allowed us to address those before we gave specific buildings and departments targets in round two. So in round one, we looked at the co-op indirect chargeback. With the co-op, they don't have a separate business manager, HR director, or technology director, or staff to support them. They use our staff. So we get a percent of their budget through a chargeback for our service. We're just asking for that chargeback to go a little higher, as it's been frozen for a couple of years. Grant funding alignment, we have a couple grants that are ending at the end of this year. So if we don't have those revenues, we need to reduce those expenses, or reduce expenses in a similar amount in a different area if those grant expenditures are important to us. Non-certified and certified staffing alignments, again, looking across all buildings to see some buildings have certain things versus others. So wanting to have that same consistency across the district, as well as different schedules, wanting to make those more similar. Redivision of staff development, we are required to set aside two percent of our general education aid for staff development. One, half of that, or one percent of that two percent stays within the district for our professional development days. The other half goes towards district-wide curriculum and our building staff development. So we're just asking for the amount that goes towards district-wide curriculum and the building staff development, have a little more shift to the district-wide professional development days. Transportation and utility adjustments, we will have one less secondary day. So we'll see some transportation savings there. We also got rid of our analog phone lines, so we'll have some utility savings in underphones as well. Elimination of building supply carryover, this will be over a two-year phase. Traditionally, we have allowed buildings to carry over their supply budgets. So going into next year, we're only going to allow half of whatever they have remaining to be carried over. A lot of school districts in the state do not allow that. They have a date and place where, let's say it's April first, where you should have everything you need for the school year by that date, and don't allow any more purchases for the rest of the year. There will be some exceptions. We have graduation in June, we have field trips in the spring, so there will be some exceptions for purchases in the spring. And other twelve-month departments, you know, we're going to need toilet paper and soap, so we would allow for those purchases beyond that point as well. And then district and admin staffing alignment, as well, looking at those inconsistencies and having similar schedules across the board.
So just to catch up on summary, first process was the certified staffing alignment to enrollment that I talked about, and that was for FTEs at the elementary, that is one point four at the middle school, and one point five at the high school. And then Tina just got done explaining a little over a million dollars worth of budget reductions. And now round two, that's where we're at right now. So our building principals are at this stage right now, where they are looking at these final dollar amounts in order to realign the budget and meet the targets of that eight percent fund balance. And so it's been a process that we've been working on since November. It's a challenging process with lots of different pieces of communication with administration, building in district, and then also building, district administration getting across the district to share this message, and then building principals working within the message to make sure that they keep the culture of their buildings going the right way during, obviously, a three-stage reduction process. And so, as you can see, there are two assignments, fifty-one thousand from district departments, activities are reducing seventy-six thousand, and I'm just reading the ballpark numbers here. Eastview Education Center and Nature Base, thirty-eight thousand, Little Mountain Elementary, fifty-seven thousand, Pinewood Elementary, seventy-six thousand, Middle School, seventy-six thousand, and High School ALP, one hundred thirty-four thousand. And so that is where we're at right now.
So before I move on, within the Budget Committee meeting that we had in January, we looked at a lot of different financial trends and how we spend our money compared to other school districts, either our size, or that surround us. And so just looking at that, looking at number of students in each building, looking at staff in each building, and how we spend our budget, these amounts were generated as targets for the buildings and departments. So what's next? We have gone around to all the buildings to present at staff meetings. We're continuing to meet with our building heads and department heads to finalize the reduction targets. We're going to have separate meetings with employee groups to go over the affected changes, finalize those staffing assignments, and have individual meetings with staff prior to spring break. And then in April and May, we'll present those staffing realignments for board approval through Personnel Matters as timely and appropriate. So like I mentioned, we have a fund balance policy, seven fourteen, where we try to maintain unassigned fund balance of eight to sixteen percent of expenditures. That's around one to two months of expenses. As of June thirtieth last year, we ended at nine point two percent. With the budget revision, we're projected to end this year at seven point eight eight percent. So that's below our minimum. And hopefully, through the board training that I've done with you, why do we try to maintain a fund balance? It helps with those unknown situations. We had over a hundred fewer students show up this year that took a hit to our revenue budget. So our fund balance helped with that. Because when we do a budget, we're going to staff based on an estimate, and we're going to continue that, those staffing assignments, whether they show up or not. So that took a hit. If you could have higher-than-expected costs, and we did have that this year with additional transportation routes. So it's important for us to have a fund balance and try to stay within that guide. It's not extravagant by any means. The one month is pretty low. We go through five million in a month, just with salaries, benefits, and health insurance, so.
And then we end with this slide right here. And if it was up to me, I'd like to have about two more slides, and they'd be all about the revenue things that I would be able to present to the staff when we were going around. But instead, I just talk about enrollment, because that's the one thing as superintendent that I can control and lead. And so, as you know, I've presented the start of a marking plan that was a little bit too robust, that we're trying to pare down. You'll see some of that, those pieces tonight at the work session. And we are moving forward with what we can control as superintendent, what I can lead with our people. But enrollment is going to be a big piece of how we attract students to our school district. The things that we're doing are amazing, and we need to tell our story better. And we've all kind of talked about that as a school board and superintendent. And so enrollment, as we've been doing a lot of phone calling of people who have left our district, and I showed that piece of the pie in the, or the pie chart. And the amount of people that we're finding that are leaving because they're dissatisfied is the smallest piece of the pie. It's a lot of people leaving to go towards, you know, proximity on their way to work. It's, it's a few that are going for different types of programming. Some are going to online that are not ours. And so we know the reasons of the people who left this past year, because we made personal phone calls. And so we know that we can, we have ways to go about attracting others. But we also think it's important as a school board for you to know a couple of other pieces. And before I get to the tool, I just want to share another piece that I pause at at every building, is we talked about the school board that we get to work for, and how proud we are that you guys value the classroom, you value the students. And that's why we were, why we did round one the way we were, because it was the farthest away from the classroom. And that was part of every budget discussion, that was part of every whole group discussion. Every, every member across the district heard that. And so, now that you've seen our presentation on, on what we've been doing across the district with budget realignment, we also think it's really imperative to equip our board members with experts who can teach us about more revenue tools, that we're well aware of, but that we should be, we should all be on the same page with. All right, so I'm going to invite Matt and Beth up to our podium here for delivery of their portion.
It should be just locked in, or you go. Oh, here we come.
Matt and Beth, can you guys introduce yourselves and what company you're with?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Matthew Hammer from Ellers'. I've got my colleague Beth Downs with me as well. We're the district's financial advisor, and we get the pleasure with working with school districts across the state of Minnesota. So really, what our objective is tonight is to provide some background information about the school district, specific to the school district, right, but also some trends that we're seeing across the state from a revenue perspective, at the state level, and some other things that are, what I would say, creating some reliance for districts on certain revenue streams from the voters. And we'll touch on all those things. What we'll see right away, the school district controls very little of this, except for putting questions out. You can't control your tax base and various pieces of it. But there are a few things that are within your control that are outlined in statute, and districts can take advantage of those things when they're put in front of them. So with that, I'll let Beth start. We'll go through the presentation.
Thanks. Hi. So our first slide we have tonight is our property tax base for the school district. So this is the breakdown by classification of all the property in the school district that's taxed. So there's a lot of information on this, this chart, but- But what it's basically showing is all the valuations for the district and then the net tax capacity on that very right column is what most of our levies are spread on. And um, as Matt mentioned, these valuations are done by your county. The school district doesn't have any control over how any properties are valued in the district. It also doesn't have any control on the classification percentage. So for that net tax capacity, um, those amounts are in legislature, right? So one percent for residential property, two percent for commercial, et cetera. So um, school district does not have a lot of control over how the levies are spread or what their tax base looks like. They're really just taking the information from the, the county and the state. Just a quick breakdown of what uh, the school district looks like as far as residential property. So back in 2020, we had about 5985 parcels. Um, 2024, we're up to 6174. And you can see the average residential market value has increased pretty significantly. So back in 2020, right around 258, and now we're up to 378,000 for an average uh, residential property. And again, nothing under the control of the school district when it comes to this. This is all county valuations and what the market is doing. And why this uh, makes a difference when we're talking about your tax levies and your, um, what you're paying as a property owner is that tax levy that the school district approves gets spread over that tax base to get a tax rate for all of your properties. And Tina mentioned this uh, during her part of the presentation too. But just because the school district tax base is increasing, you're seeing your own property valuations increase, doesn't mean the school district is getting any more revenue year over year. School district revenues are really uh, generated by your enrollment. Um, and there is not a lot that the district can do to increase uh, revenues um, other than asking for, for voters or to start charging more um, for certain programs or fees. There's really not a lot of revenue generation that the, the school district has control over. Um, you'll see the tax rates up there, that NTC, like I mentioned before. There's also something called an RMV tax rate. It's just another property tax base that your um, school district levies are spread on. It's different from a city or a, or a county as well. Tina, it's mad at me. There we go. Thank you. Uh, so this is some background on the general education formula allowance. So uh, Tina had mentioned during your presentation, quite a bit of the revenue for the school districts come through state aid. And it's basically um, a per pupil formula is the biggest driver of that. So what this graph shows is if we um, start back in uh, 2003 and we start even and um, look at inflation over the years up until 2025, that blue line would be what the per pupil amount should have been increasing year over year. If the state was keeping up with inflation, that orange dotted line is what the state is actually paying. So for 2025, the district receives 7281 per student, a little bit more for the um, grade seven through 12. Um, but if inflation had kept place like it was supposed to, we'd be up to 8645. So it's almost $1,400 difference per student, which is a lot of money when you think about Monticello um, and 4,000 students and an extra $1,400 per each of those tiddles to help maintain your programming. So um, basically what that means is that really pushes a lot of reliance on referendums to districts to try to generate as much revenue as they can. And that usually means going back to voters and asking um, for some additional help above and beyond what the state is allocating for you every year. So there's a couple of different uh, ways that school districts will ask their constituents for funds. One is levies are for learning, right? So we're talking about operating referendums or capital project tech levies. Those are amounts um, that your voters approve and they generate annual revenues for you to help you increase your budget. Um, the other voter-approved funding is bonds. Um, so there are building bonds issued that help to pay for those big construction payments. Any levy taxes over time to pay back principal and interest on those. Um, so that's basically what this next slide is um, is kind of saying that you've seen it before. You had a um, voter-approved building bond election in 2016, um, was the last one. So you are um, still paying for those amounts. So what that means, we start looking at those bonds, is you've got that 2016 A that I mentioned. There's also another 2019 bond that was for health and safety projects throughout the district. But this graph is showing the tax rates. We talked about your tax levy divided by tax base is your tax rate. Um, so this graph, the left side there is a tax rate and you're just around five percent. Um, it's really consistent. We've got a little drop off coming in um, about 19, or sorry, 20. I put my glasses on, but this is still tough for me, 2044. They're small numbers. Um, so we've got a really low tax rate right now for the district. So there are districts across the state we see anywhere from 20 to 25% being charged for the different um, building projects. The district also has a couple of debt issues that they're using their annual revenues for. So the district gets long-term facilities maintenance revenue every single year and the state allows them to borrow against it. So they'll borrow against it, get a larger dollar amount to do those big projects and then they'll use that LTFM funding to pay off that debt. So the district has utilized that um, to do some big projects without going back to the voters and affecting your, your tax rates.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of a summary of, of uh, where we're at from the standpoint of where our existing levies are for our existing debt. Um, a couple of things just to point out. You need Mike?
Oh no, I'm just making sure that.
Yeah. Yeah, um, so um, as we look at those, those tax rates, we'll see how that, or those tax bases, we'll see how that kind of plays out as we move forward, because it really will depend um, on how those levies are spread. And um, when we look at an operating referendum, you'll notice that spread on referendum market value tax base. That is, we're lucky enough as a school district to have two tax levies, uh, or two types of tax bases. Um, we have the referendum market value tax base, which four levies are spread on. And then we have the net tax capacity tax base, which is where most municipalities, including school districts, but it's spread um, a vast majority of their levy. Um, for your school district, it doesn't have as big of impact when we start talking about how much uh, the residential homeowner pays, but it does have some impact when you think of your commercial base um, and, and how those levies are going to be spread. Because the, the commercial property, when we start looking at some of these other levies, will pick up a little bit um, more of that tax burden. Um, so the district has an operating referendum in place. Um, the current state cap is 2,026631 statewide. Um, that number is figured every single year by the Department of Education. Um, and that is uh, inflationary adjusted the same way the school district's levy is adjusted. Um, the school district uh, currently gets about $3 million of revenue annually as part of your operating referendum. Um, but you're about a half of where the state average is from a voter referendum perspective. So the state average is 1,00147 right now statewide. School district's about half of that when you kind of think of where your, where your levy is. Um, typically this levy used to have an aid levy component to it. Um, you're, you're uh, or it's not, you're a little, little bit more than half when you look at this page. But uh, that state aid component really is went away from the school, uh, the school for operating referendums. That has shifted now because those factors are um, set in statute. And if you think of that valuation, those valuations adjustments that you saw from a home perspective, those were not impacting the district's budget. Um, but they do impact the district's revenue that they receive through local levy versus state aid. Um, so there's been a shift that's happened, that's shifting more of the um, annual revenues over to the local taxpayer and away from the state in essence. Um, doesn't mean the district's receiving any more revenue, but the, where the revenue is coming from has shifted. So this is an outline of the district's current operating referendum. Um, if you look at fiscal '25, that the district's uh, current authority is 67207 per student. That generates about uh, 3.1 million dollars for fiscal '26. So that was the last levy that was set, I, inserted by the board in, on December of '25. Um, that levy uh, expires after fiscal '27. The uh, in 2023, there was a law change that school districts now have the authority to board renew one time um, at the same term, with, with the same term and at the same amount. And for you guys, your term was 10 years. Um, so that means um, within the statutory window, you'll be in that window. You're already in the window as of July 1 of '24. Um, and that window ends June 15th of 2026. What that means is that the school board could choose to renew that levy like it never expired um, one time. Um, so as of fiscal year '28, that 72527 would take the same inflationary effect and continue on um, as if it, as if it never expired. So when you think of your overall budget, that's about $3 million. And I put that in context for the reductions that you guys were looking at from the standpoint of maintaining your budget. Um, that's a significant portion of the district's budget that's important for ongoing planning um, as a district is uh, is thinking about their plans as they move forward. Um, we'll talk a little bit about what the statewide trend is here. Right now, there's been two cohorts of school districts and school boards that have went through this uh, process and it went through their windows, I call them, their periods for board renewal. Those are represented on the top. So fiscal uh, year '24 expirations and '25 expirations have made it through their window. All but one school district across the state chose, chose to board renew that authority. And we'll outline some of those districts as we move forward in the upcoming slides. There was one district that chose to revoke and replace their existing authority and that was for a specific purpose. Um, they had an authority that didn't have an inflationary adjustment on it and they were going back to voters for, asked for an increase. So they wanted to uh, get that inflationary increase on their total authority and not just the portion that they were asking voters to renew. Um, the bottom two uh, pieces here represent cohorts that are in their approval um, window right now. The fiscal '26 cohort is a large cohort. There was 50 school districts in that um, uh, cohort across the state. Thirty of them have acted to board renew. Um, two chose to go back and revoke and replace, and then 18 are in progress and are in discussions right now ahead of their window of June 15th, '25. Um, and then '27 is just getting into that window of approval um, as we, as we move forward here as of July 1 of '24. This is just uh, some illustrations just for reference of districts and different le- levels of authority. Um, you look at the first cohort, that, that authority averaged 33584 um, for the districts where that chose to move forward with those board renewals. Um, the second cohort there on the right that it, it was through their cohort as a '24, um, that average was 84060. And you'll notice um, just regionally, right, Buffalo, Hanover, Montrose was in that group. Um, and they acted on that at the board level. Um, this one's a little harder to see. You'll see uh, on the left represents the districts that have acted as part of the cohort right now of those 30. Um, Big Lake is in one of, um, is part of that. Um, I, I think Rockford is in part of that. It's hard for me to see. Um, but you can see the various districts that have acted on that. Um, currently in that average authority is a little bit $935 per student on average. And then we have uh, several districts that are on the far right that are, uh, are taking action as um, in the window um, through the fiscal '27 window. And it just gives you a sense of, it's not just metro, not just rural, it's districts all across, not just regional, right? It's districts across the state of Minnesota. And really why that um, that law was passed really was um, a recognition that it costs districts to run these elections and they were virtually um, 100% successful, right? Um, so there was that burden from the standpoint of not only the cost for the district to run the elections, but also from a planning perspective as districts are making those decisions. Um, those have been the discussions really at the board level that um, districts are having. Can you live without that 3.1 million from a budget perspective? Um, and having that in place to be able to plan around it is a very important thing for the school boards and school districts as we've been talking with them. Uh, the capital project levy uh, referendum is another tool that school districts uh, can access for generating additional revenue for their operating budget. So um, if we go back to that slide that Beth uh, had up there, when we talk about levies for learning, bonds for building, uh, the two levies, the one operating referendum, that one everybody um, pretty much knows about, right? Your district has it. The capital project levy, or often referred to as a technology levy, um, is another revenue stream voters can um, present to, or uh, districts can present to voters to generate some additional revenue on an ongoing basis for your budget. And really when you think about this, right? Um, this is things that are in your existing budget that can be freed up. And the number one thing is technology. Um, technology is a big component of your budget. Curriculum textbooks, those types of things are another, um, districts that run their own transportation fleets. That's another uh, mechanism for them to fund um, transportation vehicles as part of their annual budget. And when you look at um, generating revenue in this uh, way to support your budget, you're really looking at those things that are in your current budget that can be freed up um, from a resource perspective to, to go towards other things in the classroom, right? Um, and generate some additional revenue to pay staff, to, to fund programs, uh, on things that are part of your ongoing budget. This is a little different um, because the operating referendum is a per-student driven revenue stream. This is actually driven by a tax rate. And that tax rate is part of the ballot and voted on um, by voters. And then that tax rate is applied to your net tax capacity. So when we were talking about that slide about the district's overall tax rates, have been coming down over the last five years because as valuations have grown, the name, the math becomes a larger number divided by your annual revenue that's driven mostly by enrollment um, has stayed the same. Um, so your tax rates have, have dropped subsequently. This levy um, is going to adjust as your valuations or tax base changes. Um, you could get more revenue if your tax base grows. You also can see it inversely if your tax base declines. Um, you, you'd get less revenue as part of a levy like this. Um, the revenue, um, the ballot language looks a little bit different because on an operating referendum, that language is very prescribed in statute. This is going to look more like a, a question that was presented similar to your 2015 election where you're presenting a board question and you can outline specifically um, the types of things you would look at funding. So this does a analysis on, on the two types of levies. Um, like I said, they're spread over two different tax bases. So referendum market value tax base is the operating referendum. It's a single tax rate that's applied to all property owners um, that pay towards that levy. On the right is a net tax capacity levy with your capital project levy and that's spread um, 100% levy. But I'll say the operating referendum for your school district hasn't generated any national state aid for quite some time. So when we look at these two types of levies, they're really um, gonna come from a local taxpayer exclusively right now. Um, per pupil, uh, you can put that inflationary factor on, like the school district does currently have. And a point to just clarify there too, is the state of Minnesota every year figures that inflationary adjustment as part of um, your operating levy. The district doesn't decide that. Um, that's, that number as the state increases the cap. So that 20, uh, 2,0266, that's currently the state cap. Um, as the state increases that, they apply the same inflationary factor to any district that has um, that included in the, in their ballot that was presented to voters. And it's very common, it's more common than not to not have that inflationary adjustment included. Um, you can see the allowable uses change a little bit. The election dates um, for an operating referendum have to be in November. Um, a capital project levy has um, dates that are prescribed in statute. Um, in the five months that are listed there, February, April, May, August or November. Albeit, as we look at the upcoming slides, the levy timing and when the revenue comes um, doesn't necessarily matter depending on what election date you're going to receive those, the revenue in the same fiscal year. And then there's a maximum length of 10 years uh, for either um, type um, of levy. It's very uncommon for us to see shorter terms. I would say the, the term is typically a 10-year term. Um, there is some cases for various reasons where districts would have a, a shorter term. But what I do, will say is that 10-year period comes faster than you think after, after it's authorized um, when you're coming back to have these discussions. And then the board renewal right now only, only applies to the operating referendum on a one-time basis. It doesn't apply to the capital project levy at this time. But there is some discussion. It doesn't apply to the capital project levy at this time, but there is some discussion in in at the legislative session about bringing that in as well. So revenue recognition and timeline. So as Tina talked about, that 18% of your budget coming from the tax levy. So the tax levy that would have been adopted in December, right? That impacts taxes that'll be paid in '25 and revenue that's going to be collected in '26 or recognized in fiscal '25, '26. Right now, if you have an election, if it's held in '25, it would be included and it's authorized by voters. It would impact taxes paid in '26. It would be revenue for the school district in '27. So when we think of this point in time and as the district looks at their budget, the soonest that new revenue could be authorized by voters and impact the school district's budget is fiscal '26, '27, or July 1 of '26 through June 30th of '27. So next fiscal year, right? That is going to be part of a budgeting process, cannot be impacted in any way by any vote at this point in time. The far right just represents that same information. If, for example, a district would wait to hold an election even in the spring of '26, right? Or in the case of an operating referendum, that it would impact the tax year of '27 and not be revenue until '27, '28. Just to give you a sense of of that revenue recognition for a school district. So this is completely hypothetical example as we look at tax impact. And this, we just picked $1 million as as an example of if the school district looked to generate an additional $1 million in either one of these ways, what would the property tax impact look like? And for your district, this isn't pronounced as pronounced as others because when we look at these two different types of levies, there's one is spread on referent and market value tax base, single tax rate for doesn't matter what type of property you have. So if you look at $100,000 residential and $100,000 commercial, they pay the same rate on that operating referendum at $25. As you look at the capital project levy, those classification rates that are defined in statute become applicable to how taxes are collected. And if you look at $100,000 residential home, they pay $12 on a capital project levy, and that commercial property owner then pays $28 because of the way taxes are collected when we start looking at a net tax capacity levy. And that's virtually municipalities across the state. There's very few referent and market value levies still exist in very rarely in a city perspective. School districts are the only school district or only municipality that by law uses that referent and market value tax base when it comes to a certain portion of their levy. So you can see the the difference outlined here. This is, again, this is hypothetical, generating additional $1 million in either scenario for the district's budget above currently paying for taxes. When we look at voter-approved authority comparison, this gives you a sense of all your neighbors that touch you currently what. And I I like to talk about this is this is revenue that these school districts generate on a per-student basis above what the state of Minnesota provides through their formulas. So this is additional revenue that's helping support programs, staffing, operations to help run programs. Elk River, regionally, their operating referendum is a little bit north of 1,500 per student. And then you can see what we're representing here is the two types of levies as we as we scroll down. Big Lake is represented there. We're cutting off some names, I noticed here, but Big Lake is represented there in the second. They have two types of levies. Their capital project levy is represented in blue, and then their operating referendum, which is basically close to the same rate as yours, is represented in orange at 702 per student. So that equates to not quite $1,000 per student of revenue that they receive to help run programs. Your your operating levy right there is represented currently at 699 in this representation, and this would be for fiscal '26. So this is statewide information. 1147 is the statewide average. The state voter-approved authority right now for school districts, 74% of school districts across the state of Minnesota have some form of additional resources that is approved by voters. 26% oftentimes isn't for the lack of trying. When you look at school districts across the state, they, depending on their different dynamics of their tax bases, it can make it more challenging for them to generate revenue. Specifically, when you start thinking about how the operating referendum formula functions, school districts that have large amounts of ag property or seasonal rec property, the residential homeowners can have to contribute more towards those levies, which has some impact on their success. Just to conclude, I think when we look at information like this, we just picked that information at the million-dollar level. Again, that was a hypothetical example to just give you some clarification on what it would look like in your school district. I will say all of this is highly regulated, right? When school districts are are going out to present questions to voters, they have to be done in a certain way. The questions have to be presented in a certain way. And then when it comes to the things that are driven at the statutory level from legislature, right? Most of those things, including how the process for going about the board renewal, timelines, all those things are clearly articulated in statute, and I think we'll get to some of that as we move forward. So we can answer any questions folks have or if we're doing that later.
Any questions for the other group?
I just had a clarifying question on slide two. You kind of answered it here in the last 30 seconds on the non-qualifying agricultural, qualifying agricultural, because one goes from 229 million down to zero. And so it would be farmland that doesn't have a home on it. So we're only getting tax based from the property.
Yep, so for it's it's not as big of an impact here, right? But you're exactly right. So the the on the referent and market value levies, a qualifying ag property, so the property outside of the house garage and one acre does not pay towards a operating referendum or a referent and market value levy where they do contribute towards net tax capacity levy. So that's exempt from paying. And seasonal rec is the other type of property that's exempt. So cabin owners, when you start thinking about like a brain or public schools, they have a significant portion of their tax base that's made up of seasonal record cabins. Those cabins don't contribute to the the operating levy, operating levies for operating referents because they're spread on referent and market value. And those that market value you can see is pretty aligned to the estimated market value assessed by the county. Those are pretty one for one. When you start looking to the right, that's where the classification rates and the numbers look a little bit smaller on that chart because those class rates are applied to the to the market value that's assessed by the county to come up with that tax base number.
I have a couple of questions. Could we go back to the slide that shows the state line graph with the revenues versus what we're bringing in for state aid to the district? And while we're getting there, I'll ask you my first question. So in in regard to this 2023 law change where we can auto-renew that levy from 2016, what do you think the chances are that the state will change the law again so we can do a second renewal?
I can't answer that question. That's all legislative driven, right? From the standpoint of what what legislators do from when they when they go in session and have those discussions.
What do you think for that law change first time?
Well, the change came about because of the cost that school districts were occurring in the state of Minnesota to run the elections. And for the most part, they were virtually 100% successful. So instead of having the school districts having to plan around not having that revenue in place, right? From a budget perspective, because you think of that timing when Tina and Eric are setting up their budgets right now, if your district had to plan to potentially not have $3 million as part of the budget, that was a that's a pretty significant thing to plan for when you think of your operating budgets on an ongoing basis from a stability perspective. And really, that was the number one driver, right? Is the planning side of it, but then also the cost that school districts were having to occur to to run these elections that were that were pretty much 100% successful. It doesn't elections for schools, it's not an insignificant amount of time, money that gets attributed to especially superintendent and administrative staff.
It would make sense to me that you more would look at doing a second auto-renewal then, which is kind of an eye-opener to me to think about. So in regards to this slide here, we're talking about inflation with the solid blue line, correct? And state aid to the district, to the Monticello 882 district on the red dash line?
That's the basic education formula that school districts, everybody in the school just, everybody in the state of Minnesota gets that that bottom line, right? On a per-student basis for every student that you serve.
Right. Do you think that the the general public should understand that the state revenue more so followed the red line or the blue line?
These are this number, this information right here really is the trend, right? When you think about that shift of of revenue and reliance for school districts to have additional resources, right? That's really what this is showing. From the perspective, and you also look at this trend, right? Along this line, right? There was other things that have come into play that our school districts are required to do, right? So not only has it not kept up with inflation over this period of time, but the other things from a perspective that school districts are mandated to provide services for, including special ed and other things that have happened over this 20-year period are also not insignificant when you think of that trend right here. So not only has the inflation, the formula not kept up with inflation, the other side of it is, is there's other things that school districts over this period of time have been required to do, not chose to do, but they're required to do, right? Per law.
Great discussion and point.
Yeah, you make good points there with the requirements. I think the tough bill for us to swallow is, and my belief is that we look at that blue line right there that represents the cost of living with inflation, right? Over the last few years, and families have incurred that, and some families have been able to generate the income to pay for that, which is taxable income, which the state collects taxes as a percentage of income. So I would say that the state's revenue more so follows the blue line than the red line. And if that's the case, then the state has additional dollars that they're not giving to the district to help the district follow that inflation trajectory on the blue line. And that's tough because when we're saying that it costs more because of requirements and we're going to give you less, then we're putting even more burden on the local level. And I I would say that the state looking at that probably is aware that they're passing the buck.
Yeah, and I think you look at that that top line there, that represents the spread. And really, the goal of the last legislative session was to try to close that gap a little bit when they were applying the increases of the basic education formula. Inflation hit, as we all know, if you go to the grocery store, right? You're buying food, you're going to the gas station, wherever you're wherever you go, right? Costs are up. The school districts are experiencing that, too, right? Goods are more expensive, costs more to have supplies in the classroom, costs more to buy janitorial supplies, more to run buses. We have transportation, right? All those costs for the school are are going up at the same time as as that as that gap is widening there. And those inflationary adjustments, that was about a seven two seven, over 7% increase in inflation and about another 6% last two fiscal years there compared to a four and a 2% increase from the state.
For me, the the tough takeaway from that then is that we're we're having a conversation at the local level of how do we ask the local taxpayers to cover that gap? And what we should be doing is going to the state and saying, why aren't you fixing the gap? Which is tough because we should be working with other districts to do that, but we're one small district kind of fighting for ourselves. And so we end up going back to the locals, and we're talking about $12 a household, which doesn't seem like much. But if the blue line keeps that trajectory and the red line keeps going where it's going, then you're going to end up in Dallas instead of Seattle in a couple more years. So it's a tough one to figure out as a school board, but I'm glad you showed us that chart. That's helpful.
I guess I guess in short, the state's becoming more efficient to fail in to support the school board or the schools in general is what you're stating.
And I I really like the fact that you put in here how many school boards have been put in a position to have to renew because of the fact that this is falling short. So at the end of the day, we have to provide a place for students to get educated. And I'm grateful for our staff that have worked hard on, you know, the budget reductions and everything you guys have done. But at the end of the day, that's still not enough for what we're seeing and the gaps that we have and that the districts put in this position. And at the end of the day, Mark, even you nailed it, we're only one small district. We only have one representative that represents Monticello, Buffalo, St. Michael, Elk River. We're one. Or down in the city, sometimes they have 12 different reps, right? So that their votes count, but our vote is, like Mark said, it's a small portion when we go to voice our opinion on anything, too, at the state level. So I appreciate this. This was eye-opening. And my question for you is, how many districts do you see right now having to go for a capital project as well to help offset, say, that technology levy that they go for that could free up $350,000 for? And it looks like a capital levy is going to be way less on the voters.
The residential.
Residential homeowners versus, I'm a business owner in town, versus the commercial. Yep. They take a little bit more brunt of it, but that would free up 300 and say how much technology is. There are a lot of districts going that route.
So the capital project levy as a whole statewide is, there's been a lot more districts that have been using that option when they present questions to voters. And there's various reasons for it, right? Because depending on that tax base makeup that was on the second slide, nobody looks exactly the same, right? So you might be a community that has a fair amount of ag, and then you lose that whole portion of your tax base. So that maybe makes the decision to look at a capital project levy in some way a little bit more of a way to balance the tax levy, right? Based on your tax base makeup. So right now statewide, there's 62 districts that have some form of a capital project levy that they generate additional revenue for. Predominantly, if you would have went back 10 years ago, that would have been more of a metro-dominated list. A lot of metro school districts, they refer to it as their tech levy. They don't even call it a capital project levy. It's just called a tech levy. And they generate a significant amount of revenue, a lot of them do, for funding their technology needs. And technology is broad, right? Technology means safety and security cameras. It means it means technology devices that students hold. It means training for staff on technology.
Personnel.
Personnel, all those pieces that it's a pretty broad thing. So for the most part, that's a pretty significant component of a district's budget as you look at potential ways to generate additional resources. It also is nice for school districts to have a little bit of a balance from the standpoint of how the revenue is generated. So your overall community here, no surprise is growing, right? When you have new types of property coming in, new commercial property, maybe homeowners that's not necessarily representing new kids, but there is new tax base. And that that levy is going to be generated based on the tax rate that's going to adjust by the the change in your overall net tax capacity of your school district. by the, the change in your overall net tax capacity of your school district. So that can have some impact to offset the declining enrollment. You think of declining enrollment and another reason why school districts, a lot of times are looking to have that levy as part of revenues that they receive on an ongoing basis. So, yes, it's, I think, two or three years ago, we had right around 50, so there's been about 10 or so school districts that have asked for that form of, type of levy over the last couple of years for helping support operations. And it's about a 50-50 split between rural and metro now. I think there's 33 metro districts out of the 48 that have some form of capital project levy, and now there's 29 districts of what I consider outside of the 48 metro.
I guess that just leads me to another question. I'm just keep looking at this chart or this line graph here, and I'm wondering what the future looks like. And it scares me to think that that, that gap could grow. And if we're talking about renewing a property tax levy that could cover $3 million a year, it looks like a Band-Aid to me. If this gap keeps growing, it's going to be enough. Would you, I don't know if you're the right person, people to ask, but would we be wise to ask you if it makes sense to go back to the drawing board and talk about a technology referendum, a tech levy that you're talking about, capital, whatever we want to call it? I think it's easier to sell a tech levy to the public right now than just capital projects as opposed to automatically renewing that $3 million ones, go back and take our chances for, I don't know, $10 million? So that in case the state keeps doing this to us, we can stay alive here.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose that, right? When you kind of think about your existing revenues and what your budget currently has in place, I, Tina can correct me, but I doubt you have $3 million of current technology expenditures in your operating budget right now. So that $3 million of revenue that's in place that you can plan around is as important as anything, right, from a budget stability perspective? If you're looking at trying to close the gap from the standpoint of your future budgets and in creating some stability in your budget as you move forward, the capital project levy could be something that the school board could explore, and we can run different scenarios at whatever level you would want to do. But you really got to think about that from the standpoint of what's in your budget that could qualify for that, right? As you move forward to be able to support your operating budget as you move forward instead of try to go about it in a, in a way where you would potentially go out and take your chances and then risk a component of your operating budget as you move forward.
And just, we want to thank you for being our financial advisor and coming here to share like just a wealth of knowledge for all of us to consider as we move forward. I mean, I can just see obviously the engagement of questions and, and engagement of everybody on the board is just really high, so we appreciate that. And then I think we better bring up our cleanup hitter for our league, from our legal team. We have on Edison here to just give a little bit of governance overview to support as you, as we all move forward with discussion in the future.
All right. Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm John Edison. I'm with the law firm Squires, Walzberger &amp; Mace. We've changed our name a few times over the years, but we've been working with your school district for a long time. Most of you in the context of school board meetings or individual meetings over the years. And like Ellers, my firm works with school districts across the state. So, I mean, the issues that you're talking about at the table tonight, I mean, there are issues that, that school districts all over Minnesota are grappling with right now. I'm, I'm hearing about challenges moving forward, especially now as we start talking about getting into negotiations later this year, and it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a tough bargaining season, I think, because of some of the challenges that, that school districts are facing. My portion of the presentation tonight, I think, is probably going to be the shortest of the three. I'm going to talk a little bit about effective governance and some best practices. And one of the things I wanted to say, just as a starting point, is I think, you know, in the years that I've worked with your school district, I, I consider this board to be a high functioning board, so kudos to all of you for that. I'm not just saying that because I'm here, I'm saying that because there are some districts where I do have a lot of conversations about disagreements between board members and things like that, and this is not one of them. So I think that's a good thing. Starting, the first thing I wanted to talk about is just statutory responsibilities of a school board. And I think this dovetails into what you heard from, from the people at Ellers in terms of the authority that you do have, because when, when it comes to revenue, you know, there's a lot you can't do, there's some things you can do. And then in terms of what you have to do, there's quite a bit of discretion there in Minnesota law. And so when you look at the statutes that apply to school boards, there's a lot of general statements about what the board is responsible for. So, and I've got some of these on the slide. So in Minnesota statute, section 123B point 02, there's a provision that says the board must have the general charge of the business of the district, the schoolhouses, and the interests of the schools thereof. And then it goes on to talk about how the board's authority to conduct the business of the district includes, with specifically listed in statute, and then implied powers that can be construed as reasonably necessary to carry out the specific duties that you have in Minnesota law. And that's really the same standard that applies to any political subdivision of the state of Minnesota. So when you look at a city or a county, it's, it's pretty much kind of the same framework that applies to them. They're all considered political subdivisions of the state, and the powers they have are largely driven by statute. Another good general statute that talks about the board's authority and responsibilities is Minnesota statute, section 123B point 09 subdivision 7, which talks about how the board shall make, and when deemed advisable, change or repeal rules relating to the organization and management of the board and the duties of its officers. So again, that's general oversight authority, which is again repeated in the next subdivision, subdivision 8, which talks about how the board must superintendent, superintendent manage the schools of the district and adopt rules for their organization and instruction. So when we talk about what that means, so what does it mean for the board to successfully be able to superintendent, manage the schools of the district? There's a lot that goes into that, and, you know, I don't have the time tonight to talk about all of that, but there are some key things that, that come out of this. One is that the board has to furnish school facilities. And in fact, there's another statute that specifically talks about how the duty and function of the school board is to make sure that there are school, adequate school facilities for the students that live in your school district. Another thing that goes into superintendent ending and managing the district is to arrange for transportation. There's laws that, that apply to a district's obligation to provide transportation to students, which I, I grew up in North Dakota, so I always think that's, it's interesting, because when I, where I grew up, we didn't ride the bus to school, and, you know, here, it's very different in Minnesota. The board is responsible to prescribe textbooks and courses of study. Another thing, you know, we spent a lot of time listening to presentations earlier tonight about levies and authority for raising revenue. You know, one of the responsibilities of the board is to levy for necessary funds for the conduct of schools, paying debts and other proper expenses of the school district. And in fact, there's another statute, section 123B point 02, that talks about how the board must provide by levy of tax necessary funds for the conduct of schools and proper, payment of proper expenditures of the district. And so now, the determination, obviously, of what it means to be able to do that, I mean, that's where you as board members collectively make decisions with input from your district's administration and outside experts like Ellers in order to make those determinations. I mean, there isn't a statute that says that you must do this in order to meet your obligations as a school board. Another thing, so kind of moving on to another general topic, one of the things I talk about a lot in presentations and board training is the role of the board versus the role of administration. And so really, as I'm sure you've all heard before in board trainings through MSBA or other sources, that the board, the role of the board is macro management. And once the school board sets the policy or general direction that will be taken by the district, then it's up to the superintendent and your administration to carry that, out that implementation of the policy or the direction that you set for the, the district to go. And so to state that another way, if you're talking about a map and a road trip, the board would identify the destination on the map that the district needs to go, and then the superintendent and other designees under the direction of the superintendent would drive the car to that destination and pick the route that would be taken to get there. When we're talking about difficult decisions related to money and staffing and cutting budgets and all of those things, it's very common for citizen complaints to go along with that. And those could come from a variety of sources. People upset about their taxes going up, other people, you know, a concerned parent might be, might be worried about a class size. You have your employees who are other constituents who, you know, might end up being put on a unrequested leave or laid off because of a budget cut. And all of those people might end up coming to you with a complaint or a concern about what's happening in the district. One of the things that I think is really important when you're dealing with citizen complaints is to follow a chain of command or protocol when those come in. And in my mind, the best practice for that, and what I think highly functioning boards do, is they listen to what the concern is, and they document that concern and share it with the superintendent. And then they also direct the person who's making the complaint to the superintendent or principal, depending on the type of complaint, as the person who would be able to, to more directly address their concern and possibly conduct an investigation if it, if it's that type of complaint that would warrant an investigation. And when, when you're providing, when you're directing the citizen to the superintendent or the principal as the administrator who would be able to further review the concern that's being raised, I think it's obviously a good idea to provide contact information, let that person know that you'll be sharing their concern with the superintendent so administration can act on it. And then explain that, you know, if it's a complaint, like a harassment complaint or something like that, or bullying in the context of student bullying type complaint, that, that the citizen may be asked to complete a complaint form to document what the concern is, if the district has one. Another question that comes up a lot in this context is, what about an anonymous complaint? So if someone submits a concern, doesn't put their name on it, there's no contact information attached to it, does that mean that the district can just ignore it? I think the obvious answer to that is no. You know, to the extent you're able to do so, I would follow the same process for an anonymous complaint that you would for a complaint that has a name attached to it, because there may be a perfectly legitimate complaint that's submitted anonymously and it should still be addressed. And so why is this chain of command so important? I think, I, I like to talk about this by not being disparaging toward individual school board members, but acknowledging that everyone who's on a school board brings certain strengths to the table. And that's what makes a board as a body so great and representative of the community that, that everyone lives in. But there are certain things that, that individual board members just aren't trained to do most of the time, sometimes they aren't. One, it'd be very uncommon for a member to be trained in how to conduct an investigation in the school setting. And in fact, if an individual board member does take action individually to conduct an investigation into something, someone could actually inadvertently create legal liability by, by trying to investigate, and that could be in the form of a data practices issue or something else. Another thing that's important in these types of situations is, especially when difficult decisions are being made at the board, board, board level, it's, it's important for a school district to have a clear and consistent message, and a lawful message in terms of what can be shared and what can't be shared, that's delivered to the person who's making a complaint, other witnesses, and, you know, if it's a complaint against a person, the alleged offender. And then another reason is because the board acts as a body, and individual board members, unless the board has specifically given authority to someone to do, do this, would, an individual board member would not have authority to conduct his or her own investigation into a complaint. And then finally, individual board members might not know the full story of what's going on, what's been done in the past, or what's happening right now with respect to a particular issue. You know, for example, if administration has already been trying to deal with something before it's to the board level. So those are all the reasons why the, the chain of command is important. Another thing that, that we talk about when I'm providing training on, on board governance issues is what not to do when someone comes with a specific complaint or a concern. And one is, don't pick sides. Two would be, don't promise a particular outcome, because, again, the board acts as a body, not as individuals, and, and one person can't carry through on ensuring that a, that a particular outcome actually happens. Another one is, don't promise confidentiality. A lot of times, people come forward with a concern and they want to be confidential. That could be include, that could include a parent, it could include an employee, it could include someone from the public who maybe is concerned about raising a viewpoint that's maybe not popular with the majority and wants to be confidential in that regard. And the reality is, there, that the district is subject to the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, and there's a lot of circumstances in which a complaint or a concern, or information about a complaint or a concern could be released to someone else. It might not necessarily become public, but it could be shared within the school district with people who have the right to access that information, or if an investigation's taking place, other witnesses who would need to know what the complaint is to respond. And so for all of those reasons, I would not promise confidentiality. Another one is, I've talked about this already, don't investigate an issue yourself. Another one would be to try not to act individually as the decision maker, so to speak, because that's something that an individual board member can't do. You act as a body. Another thing that I would recommend not to do is not, don't offer to personally address a concern. I've seen that happen other places where someone says, you know, I can, I can take care of this if I just talk to so and so, and then they go and do that. And I've seen that make a situation much worse. And then finally, when you're dealing with things as board members, it's really unsettling for a rank and file district employee to have a board member come to them about a particular concern out of the blue. That's another thing I've, I've seen happen in, in other school districts, and that's where I think it's important for board members to talk to the superintendent or the superintendent's cabinet when there's a concern and not go below that and, and try to speak directly with, with other district employees. So now, obviously, you have constituents and people come to board members to, to talk about concerns or things that are important to them, and they might want to come to you to, to, you know, to try to lobby for you to lobby at the board table for a particular course of action. I mean, that's how our, that's how our system works, that's politics, we all know that. So, I mean, obviously, things like that happen all the time, and there's nothing wrong with listening to a concern a person has, asking questions to understand that concern, and then bringing it forward to those in the district who are able to do something about it, which could be the district's administration or the board as a whole. So what about the flip side? What, what happens if, if you've heard someone out and that, that someone keeps coming to you with the same issue over and over again and is maybe being rude or disrespectful about it? Is there any obligation for a school board member to continue to engage with someone under those circumstances, or can you say, no, you know what, I, I'm not going to talk any further with you about this particular issue? And, and the answer is, there's no legal requirement that would obligate an individual board member to engage in a certain amount of dialogue with a, with a particular person. So you all have the ability to decide how much you want to have those conversations, and if they become, if they enter into a realm where they're not being productive, you could exercise your, your decision-making authority to end the conversation if, if it was warranted. And so, you know, options obviously could include referring a citizen complaint to district administration, which I talked about earlier. Decline to engage further with someone if you provided information and answered the question that was raised. And you could choose to ignore communications or emails if, if someone's being abusive, insulting, or argumentative, or even end a conversation or a phone call under those circumstances. And so I say this because, you know, I, I think we live in an era where there have been a lot of acrimonious communications that have gone on in a lot of places. And I think, I was thinking about this recently and talking to a friend about it. And I think, I was thinking about this recently and talking to a friend about it, and I think some of what I've just seen just as an attorney representing school districts in Minnesota is, it started in my mind with the pandemic, where people had a lot of opinions and wanted a place to voice their opinions. And there wasn't a place to go to do that except for public comment at government meetings, like local school district meetings. And so, you know, we started to see that happen a lot more and more. And then at the board level, board members and boards as a whole were grappling with the question of, you know, we want people to be heard, but we also need to carry about our business and make sure that's completed, and how do we put up the guardrails? So there's a lot of discretion, like I said, in that particular issue. And then finally, one of the things I wanted to note is that, you know, if there's a complaint that's filed that requires a response, the law would impose that requirement really on the district as a whole or the school board as a whole. And so, you know, for that reason, that's another reason why, you know, a complaint that comes forward, that it should be channeled through the superintendent so the superintendent can work with administration or legal counsel if necessary to ensure it's handled appropriately. And then the last thing I want to talk about is, and this kind of dovetails into some of the communications that I've seen across the state over the past five years or so. And that's just dealing with threats of litigation. Because when you're making tough decisions and exercising discretion where there's not a lot of clear guidance in terms of what you have to do, that, you know, it's not unusual for someone who's upset with the decision that's made to threaten to take legal action against a school district and file a lawsuit. And I just wanted to talk real quickly about, you know, if that happens, a properly initiated lawsuit involves a document called a summons and complaint, and that has to be served on an appropriate district representative, which in state court would be, under new rules, would be the board chair. Or if it's a federal lawsuit, it would be on a member of the school board or the superintendent of the district. And so there's a specific way that that has to be done. And then outside of that, administrative agencies, both at the state and federal level, have a lot of authority to investigate complaints that are filed. And when that happens, usually, school districts are put on notice of that through a letter that goes from the agency to the superintendent of the school district. So I'm just telling you this so you know, you know, if you see a document that's characterized as a lawsuit, I know that can be unsettling, but there are specific ways that that needs to be initiated. And if you get something that wasn't initiated in one of those ways, chances are it's not a legitimate legal action against the district. And then if you do receive something that purports to be some kind of legal notice about a potential lawsuit, the proper way to handle that would be to notify district administration right away, and then administration can report it to your insurance company and work with me to make sure that it's handled the way it needs to be handled. So that kind of takes me through what I had prepared for tonight. Can I ask any questions if anyone has any?
Thank you. That was a lot of info, and we're not done yet. We're on to item number D, capital budget, 2526. Please welcome back up to the podium Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. I won't take that long to talk about capital budgets. So, yeah, we have nearly a million dollars in capital revenue allocated for next year. As in previous years, annual capital items remain a top priority while other varying capital needs are considered as funding allows. In November and December, I went around to each site, talked to the site administrators, seen what their requests were, kind of divvied it up, this capital, this LTFM. And then from there, we, you know, we want to ensure that we're kind of getting their top priorities requests through this process. And then in addition to capital funds, we receive long-term facility maintenance revenue, which is tracked separately through our 10-year plan. However, the demand for facility maintenance continues to exceed available funding. Again, if any capital funding comes in under budget, the remaining funds are returned to the district office where they're reallocated. So again, if you take a look at the, and this is an action item, we want to act on this tonight. You know, a lot of the requests that came in were for classroom settings. The ones on the top are kind of reoccurring. They come in every year. You know, you have the curriculum, you have technology, Jamie, what you were talking about, that's a big line item that comes in every year. We have salaries, the $2 set aside, and again, some helmet stuff that Gary needs for football, hockey, and lacrosse. But now we get down to the ones that the sites were requesting. The high school, we thought that it'd be a good time to approve these tables that the, they need for their welding class. Last year, we gave them, I think, eight welders, so this'll kind of shore up that project that they're doing. At the high school, there's a kiln that no longer is working, so they need new kiln. We want to make sure kids can do pottery and all that. And then one of the kilns that they had at the high school, the lid is actually broke, so we wanted to make sure we had two functioning kilns for them. Again, the DO, the parking lot study here that we're conducting at the middle school, that's another one of the asks. We're doing that right now. Little mountain with the changes in start times. We found out very quickly that it's very dark still in the morning with those earlier start times, so they need three more parking lot lights so that they can get the students in safe. Again, here, the corridor emergency lights, that was, that's kind of been an ask, I think last year that was an ask, so we're pushing that through. The pool, we're going to be doing a pool project here. We're changing out the lights. There's currently dry niche lights in there, and we're switching that out to a wet niche. But we need to pay for the electrical circuitry through capital because that is a new item. The lights we can use LTFM funds for. It's the electrical part we cannot. Pine wood, we're going to give them a door fob that they need to help get kids in and out of the playground a little easier. And on the buildings and ground side, we have, you know, we have capital, we have custodial equipment that we need. We have a big budget. When the last time I think anything was purchased was 2017, so things are getting old and falling apart. So, yeah. So.
I have a question on the top line. A lot of these are aligned with previous years. However, the tech director one is about 300% higher than last year. Can you elaborate on the change that's being driven by that?
So previously, we only funded part of the tech director's position through capital. With our budget alignment process, we are allocating all of that position to capital since we can, so that helped us reduce our round two targets back to the buildings.
Those would be all just salary and benefits, then?
Correct.
And Terry, I think you mentioned too, but none of this is frivolous needs. This is just to keep us operating and keep things functioning.
Yeah, yes, yeah. I had a heart attack this fall when Dave let me know that the dry niche lights in the pool were leaking, and the company that makes the gaskets is no longer in business. So it's either fill them in with no lights or change it to a wet niche. And in talking with Gary and a lot of the swimmers, it's just a different kind of a feel or environment while the kids are swimming and, you know, want to kind of give them a good swimming.
It's a safety issue, yeah, just like little mountain.
Well, and that's what, that's actually the, they're actually not required because of the lights up above, you have enough lumens, so.
But in the diving, well, you'd have to have a water spitter then too. You'd have to put something else in because that's safety.
So, yeah, it's tough, and we want to, again, support sports and the classes, and as you can see, we don't have a lot left over at the end, so.
Any other questions for Terry?
Final comment. So Jamie, you asked about the list, and our needs are much longer than this. You know, a million dollars doesn't get us very far after tech and capital and curriculum needs and helmets. We have a lot of projects that we would love to do across all buildings. There's just not enough funds to get everything done, and at the same time, we're trying to use a multiple-year approach to some of these requests, just to make sure they're fully vetted and we kind of get everything included that's needed for these projects. So we try to do the best we can to make sure, you know, each building is getting something. We don't have all the buildings on there. We try, you know, look across multiple years to see how we can make sure we're hitting buildings, you know, equitably and making sure everybody gets something.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. And board, this is an action item. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Onto teaching and learning, I'd like to welcome up to the podium Director of Teaching and Learning Cindy Oshing and District Literacy League Kristen Hall to talk about our district-wide literacy and professional development update.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. And I am Cindy, and this is Kristen. So we'd like to share with you tonight our professional learning update for this school year. We've been working on a lot of things. We want to share just a few of them with you. I'd like to start off with a quote from two of the most foremost leaders in education and research across our country and probably across all countries, Robert Marzana, Richard Defour. And he said, they said in their book, Leaders of Learning, "One of the most powerful things a school can do to help enhance student achievement is to guarantee that specific content is taught in specific courses and grade levels." Specifically, we're talking about state standards here. And so this year, we've been doing a lot of work with state standards, and we'll be doing that in the next several years. I'd like to start with science standards. Science standards are implemented this year, the new science standards, and we'll be seeing the new science MCA four test. Specifically, what I'd like to talk about is what's going on with instruction within each one of these and what we're doing for professional development. And so science standards are implemented this year, our English Language Arts standards next year, social studies standards the following year, and then math in 2028, provided that they are finalized through ruling, and they are in the last stages of ruling right now. In the science standards, what's new in the science standards is that we've switched to follow the next-generation science standards, which are phenomenon-based. And so what educators are doing is they're starting with phenomenon to begin their unit of instruction, and then they're focusing all of the instruction in that unit on that phenomenon. For example, the question or the wondering that might be posed, let's say, is, why do leaves change colors in the fall? And then they'll take that question or wondering throughout their entire unit and then work with students on discovery and using investigation and manipulation to answer finally at the end of a unit, why do leaves change colors in the fall? And so students will be able to do that. So all of science education right now is based on phenomenon right now. That takes a lot of changing in instruction, and so that's where our science teachers have been working on. In English Language Arts, and starting with English Language Arts through social studies and math standards, the state of Minnesota has implemented what they're calling anchor standards and learning progressions. And that means that they take the same set of standards called anchor standards, and they apply them from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, starting at the most elementary level, and then they progress those same exact standards and benchmarks all the way through 12th grade, but progressively getting more rigorous all the way through. And so that's happening now through ELA, social studies, and math. English Language Arts specifically, we're focused on reading, writing, speaking, listening, and I'm missing something.
Critical thinking.
Thank you, critical thinking. And all of our professional development is focused around that. In the area of social studies, they have made a switch. Again, they're using the learning progression, starting with very basic elements through kindergarten. You can watch that same standard progress all the way through 12th grade and see what a student should learn in 5th grade and what they should have learned in 4th grade and what they're going to learn in 6th grade. It's really valuable for teachers to see that. But what I really like about the change in social studies instruction is the move to inquiry-based. So it's very similar to science. Instead of phenomenon-based, it's inquiry-based. So they think of a topic that they want to research or wonder about, and then they use the content areas that they're studying to answer those questions, present presentations or solutions to those questions or problems happening in society. So it's inquiry-based, forcing again, critical thinking and decision-making. And then math is doing very much the same thing, again, with the learning progressions, really focusing on rigor and really focusing on conceptual understanding and thinking and talking about mathematics. And so our teachers are engaged in professional development across all four of those areas throughout this year, and they will for the next four years. In order to do that, we as a staff all the way across our district have been engaged in compass cohorts through our multi-tiered system of support. So if you remember that multi-tiered system of support, it's that triangle, some sort of thing that you've seen before, where tier one instruction is the instruction that all students get for all core content areas. And so 80% of students should be successful in that tier one instruction that they get in their general education classroom. About 15% of the students at tier two need a little bit more intervention, and then about 5% of the students need a tier three intervention with extensive supports and possibly even special education referral. So the group of teachers that we've had and administrators, coordinators, working together on quality, high-quality tier one instruction this year, these are some of the outcomes that we've been working on, developing a shared understanding of what really high-quality tier one instruction looks like, what are those strategies that we need to lever to ensure that all students meet grade-level content. We're using just-in-time supports, or we want to train our teachers in just-in-time supports to engage all students. And what that means is that every student should have the benefit of learning their grade-level content, no matter where they're at. And then as they're learning that, when the student begins to struggle, or you can see a class is struggling, where they maybe missed some content, you pause, you provide an intervention just in time to help them catch up, and then you keep moving at grade-level instruction, and then maybe pause again, give them more supports. So it's called just-in-time supports in order for learning acceleration, to accelerate students to meet grade-level content instead of students being behind year after year after year. So that's one of the things we're really going to be focusing on. We're also aligning our instructional materials and professional learning with best practices. So those are some of the things you can be looking forward to over the next several years on the school year we're working on.
All right. Thank you, Cindy. There's so much learning going on in terms of what our students need to know, understand, and be able to do as we implement standards over the coming years. How we teach it is also important to think about. Our teachers are engaged in a lot of learning about how to teach responsively in ways that will close some of the gaps that students have and ensure every student has one year's growth in one year's time. We're busy creating the conditions and the support for teachers to develop that instructional agility and try some new instructional strategies that align with these best practices. Really, this is about supporting our teachers to pull new information and use it to best support our students. Focusing first at the elementary level, we continue to move teachers through structured literacy learning. It is required that we create the space for teachers to... It is required that we create the space for teachers to bring evidence-based practices into our reading and English Language Arts classrooms, these practices that are going to be more impactful for greater numbers of kids to learn how to read. We're celebrating approximately two dozen of our teachers have recently finished their two-year letters journey. We've got about 90 teachers that are two-thirds of their way through their online language and literacy academy. And we have about another two dozen of our elementary colleagues who have just started their letters training this year. So they're nearly a third of the way through their two-year learning journey. So we are well underway with building our teachers' pedagogical practices to meet the ever-changing needs of our students. Those practices are the first step, bringing it into application is continuing learning also. We are fortunate to have a team of amazing elementary administrators and reading coaches that are supporting our teachers, bringing new practices into place in job-embedded ways with our amazing curricular resources. Our Amplify Knowledge Building Curriculum at the elementary level really helps to build students' language comprehension. This year, our learning focused in August on how to plan evidence-based units and lessons that lead kids down the path to that shared understanding and that guaranteed and viable curriculum that Cindy had mentioned. Now, planning and delivering instructions is the first step. We followed that up in January with PD for our principals and coaches on how to look for these evidence-based practices in play with effective coaching strategies for our Amplify CKLA. Because that coach on the side is what brings good practices into place. Also, in our, in our Functional Phonics curricular resource, that coaching is an important part of that model. We have a multi-year partnership with CARRY at the U of M to really help us bring good practices into play with this high-quality instructional resource. This year, our coaches are getting a lot of support in ensuring all teachers are solid with their instructional design, which really is baked into the curricular resource itself. And now that that's really going in a strong direction, we're layering on top instructional delivery, those in-the-moment decisions teachers might make to be more responsive to the needs of the kids in front of them. As we continue our work, providing our coaches opportunities to go partner with a mentor, coach in another district and see and share some strategies and go and grow together and come back and help our kids out, that's key in this process as well. We all are learners and we're all doing better every day. And then finally, we're, we're seeking partnership from CARRY in site visits where we bring them in, we visit some of our classrooms and they are helping us critically reflect on where are our strengths and where are our opportunities to grow next steps. I'm gonna pause here because this is an ongoing partnership we've had with them and we've been fortunate to have the same team from CARRY keep coming back. That relationship really helps us get to know our classrooms on that nuanced level. We're gonna celebrate a couple of successes that have been pointed out now that we're two-thirds of the way through these visits this year. Some specific improvements that have been noticed by our external partners coming in, they're seeing increases in student engagement. It is student engagement that does lead to more opportunities to practice and strengthen their skills. They're seeing more clear and explicit instruction. There is that, the umbrella term for that literacy-based instruction that leads to more students acquiring the skills that they need to read, write, speak, listen and critically think through all parts of their day. And finally, that lesson pacing. Our teachers are able to move through each lesson chunk, each lesson set of days in a much more fluent manner, which then allows them to be more in tune with the kids to provide those just-in-time supports that Cindy mentioned. Now, it doesn't stop there. We also have work going on in our secondary schools because while kids are learning how to read as they move through elementary school, it shifts when they hit secondary schools. Our focus in the secondary school really is on ensuring our students are able to apply their foundational knowledge in the content and disciplinary areas. Every teacher is a teacher of literacy in Monticello School District. Every teacher has the opportunity to expand students' vocabulary, background knowledge and understanding it all of the parts of the day. And through that, it really helps our kids to know how to shape and shift their futures. But this is built on a solid foundation. One of the things we've recognized is our data has shown that over the past several years, anywhere from a quarter to a third of our middle school students struggle with reading these polysyllabic and polymorphic words, big words. Let's pause and take a look at what some of these are and think for a second about a middle school kid that's in your life now or was at one point. There's a few words up there that a middle school student might misread. Again, about a quarter to a third of our students were misreading words like this. Now, we see that and we can see oscillation, but a middle school student who has not had access to structured literacy might read it as observation. They might read aesthetics as athletics when they look at the first and the last and they're not sure in the middle. And that final word, they might see industry and shun at the end. If we think about what that means for kids as readers though, if they're not able to accurately read the words in text, they're losing out on meaning for the words. And so about a month ago, we spent some time at the middle school ensuring every student, every teacher had the skills that they needed to be able to present a simple protocol for attacking these multisyllabic and multimorphic words. With our middle school administration team willingly stepping out to model these practices using words across the content area and providing our teachers with a scripted lesson plan to really break down some words in their upcoming units, we are building our teachers' capacity to build our students' capacity to acquire more information in text. And I know that the middle school administration team will talk a little bit more about this coming up next. So I'll move on as we hit our high school. Because as kids grow up through our system, we absolutely wanna make sure that we are using data to inform our decisions. We've expanded our universal screening to include ninth grade and beyond at our high school. And what that does is three times throughout the year, it allows us to take these dipstick measures to take a look at a system, a site, a student level, how are our kids doing? Where are their strengths? Where are some opportunities we can strengthen them in both reading and in math? Universal screening is a best practice and it is expanding into the high school so that we can continue to be responsive to the needs of our kids and celebrate their successes along the way. Now finally, we also wanna be responsive to our staff. And at the high school, they've engaged throughout the year in some personalized PD where our staff is exhibiting voice and choice in selecting some small segments to learn and apply their learning in relevant ways. A common request from the staff was on strategies that are impactful for our multilingual learners as well as strategies to address literacy in all of the areas. And so on the screen are just a sampling of some of the topics from a recent session as well as the agenda, which when we think about job-embedded professional learning, we're creating the space for colleagues to learn collaboratively and reflectively and bring it into action. So just to highlight a few things that are going on in our district, those are some highlights.
So to wrap up, I'd just like to say that we're going to continue the hard work with our teachers throughout the rest of the school year and our administrators, of course. And then hopefully at the end of the year, we'll be able to gather all of our data together. We'll come back to you in June with the results of all of our hard work and we're really hoping to see some great improvements. Any questions?
Questions, no?
I just think for me, tonight is all about showing the practice that we've been putting together across the district and showcasing that in mid-year review. It's kind of important to see that the things that we're all working on at administrative level is being disseminated and worked on and all the way down. And as I've been able to see all staff meetings this year, multiple times, just see, I'm seeing that across the district. And I think today is just about like showing the district level discussion or highlights of where we're going, but then just bringing in that application and being able to have the middle school showcase. And they're really teeing this up for the middle school to be able to show what we're, what we're working on across the district.
Yep, so we'd love for our middle school leaders to come forward and really show what great work they've done this year.
I just wanna say, Cindy, this was just a plug for how important it is for students to do the standardized testing for us because it doesn't reflect on their grades. I mean, I can't tell you how many times my own kids have been like, is this gonna change my grade? And so I'm like, no, it's not at all, just relax. And we kinda make it fun because I let her get a special treat for it, right? But it's important for the district to see where we're at and to be able to adjust if we need to adjust.
We have, we only have two ways to really, well, we have several ways to measure it, but two key ways to measure that. And that's through our Fastbridge testing, screening for where kids are, are missing concepts and through our MCA testing to see where, where are we meeting the standards and where aren't we and where do we need to improve upon that? It's not a, it's not a focus on the student, it's a focus on our district and our improvement. So yeah, thank you for saying that.
Well, thank you Cindy and thank you Kristen, I appreciate it. All right, now we're moving on to Monticello Middle School Midyear Review. So help me welcome up to the podium our Monticello Middle School Principal Jeff Sherber and Assistant Principal Rachel Sandquist.
Thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about an update from what we're up to at the, at the middle school level, specific to what Cindy and Kristen had shared. Eric had asked us to share a little bit about some of the trainings that we worked with staff on, specific to the science of reading. So we'll kinda go through a few slides in that regard, kinda give you a snapshot of what we're asking the middle school teachers to cover. And then Rachel's gonna share a little bit of what we've seen since that training and that's probably gonna be some more of the interesting dialogue that we would have just because it's been pretty neat to see how some of the training and the help from Cindy and Kristen has helped, kinda it's got some legs in what we're seeing in the classroom. We typically start every meeting that we have, whether it's a leadership instructional meeting, staff meeting with bulleted points, focusing on getting on the same page for collective efficacy, our MTSS process in particular, our tier one instruction. And then we will always ask ourselves, what does that look like in the classroom? What does it look like, what are students doing, what are staff doing? The different part about this slide, this last year is we added with the primary focus on the instructional framework and the science of reading. The instructional framework is, is not anything new to the middle school staff. That's just good teaching, best practices, how you handle yourself as a professional. The, the new part for the middle school staff is that piece on the science of reading. And a lot of training at the elementary level about letters training and Ola training. And at the middle school, there's a handful of folks who went through that training, but with the 65-plus adults in the room, there's a, a number of them we wanna get on the same page. So one thing we, in order to get everybody on the same page, we wanna get a handle on where you're at. So when we reference the science of reading, it's a big concept. We actually started the school year in August and Eric was in the room when we did this. And we asked that question, how do students, students or children learn to read? We gave them a chance to turn and talk and they visited and all these highly qualified professionals, some of them struggled a bit because they know a lot, they've been through the training. Others, if you weren't, hadn't been through the training, it might be hard to answer that question. Then we gave them this challenge. Now that you've turned and talked and talked about it, we're gonna have you put it in writing as if somebody very important to you that you respect a great deal has asked you this question. It might be the superintendent, it might be a school board member. You're caught in an elevator, you've got one minute. Share with that individual that you wanna impress, how do students, do children learn to read? They were given that, they wrote it on their cards and it was an awkward minute as they all scrambled to condense what they know and put it in writing. They put it in an envelope and then they turned it into their, their ILT leaders. And that's the folks in the top row there. So Jocelyn got all the ones from the math department, Caitlin got them from science, Ryan gathered all the envelopes from social studies, Nate took the language arts. We had Casey take the specialist, Cory gathered the special ed and then Sarah gathered those information from the student center. So that August day, we archived what everybody knew. And then we knew we're gonna spend the year sharing and talking and working with Cindy and Kristen on what the science of reading is all about. We're gonna spend the year, they work in cohorts, they discuss the trainings. We'll share a little bit about one of the trainings that we had. And then on May 20th, we're gonna open those up. Actually, we're gonna ask them to write a new one. Now that you've been through the training, you'll be able to measure what was in your, on your mind on that August day and now it's May 20th. And in these cohort meetings, they will discuss the dialogue they've had throughout the year. I'll give them a chance and Eric, you'll be able to do the same. Open up that envelope and hopefully you can discuss as a group of professionals in the department, all the growth you've had in that regard. It'll be very interesting to see that. So, and actually one of the slides here, if you get stuck in the elevator with a middle school teacher and you wanna ask that question, we've got a cheat sheet for you too, so you can know what you're looking for. Little bit about the training we had on that January day. Getting everybody on the same page was, we said, being part of that collective efficacy across the board. It did involve, if you can share the next slide. We let them, when we start the meeting, letting them know these are three key components. And when you walk out the door, we're gonna give you a resource. We're gonna train you on how to use that resource. And then it'll be very clear, this is an expectation that us here at the middle school will be using this. And when you walk into a classroom, you'll be able to see it in use. It will be familiar to the students. You should be able to walk in and ask them how it's being used and give a chance for a child to not code-switch from class to class and provide that continuity. We also included, we wanted to share with staff, this is just one piece of the puzzle. This isn't just one training, that it's a start. We have other bullet points that we're working on, but that fourth bullet down was a key part of the discussion we had on the 25th and that we're gonna instill the expectation that everybody at the middle school uses these strategies. I'll just give you an example. Part of our turn and talk was to look at some of the words that Kristen had up there. And oftentimes at the middle school level, we would, when a child gets to a tough word, we'd let them skip that word. We would let them substitute for an easier word. We might even change the entire rigor of the dialogue to help them and scaffold them through it. Cindy, Kristen is asking us as a staff to, one part of the science of reading is expect the child to navigate through those tough words, work through the trainings and we'll have an example up here. But they know that's just part of the deal at the middle school. We're gonna expect you to, to be able to attack those big words and be part of it. And it's gonna be part of a process that everybody's familiar with. This first slide, this is just an articulation of what Kristen had shared. Scarborough's rope is just a complex depiction of what it means for the science of reading. It's a beginning, it's a lot for staff to absorb, but to provide that structured reading approach, as opposed to what we've typically been trained in with a balanced reading approach, it's just, it's just a beginning and a first step approach to have staff know that. If it's the first time you've seen it, if you're a middle school teacher, you've probably gonna see it 100,000 more times because knowing and understanding the complexity of the science of reading, especially if we're not, all of us are as trained as some of the elementary teachers are. This is an example of one of the posters that we would share with staff. If you walked into a classroom, you'd see this posted. You'll also get some instruction from each teacher, how they're, how they're expecting students to attack these words. We went through this, we kinda clunked through it as a staff, we had some fun. Then the next step was to have staff share how they're gonna model that in the classroom as adults and expect that from students. This is just another illustration, it's when you, we shared this with staff that it's one thing to say, we're gonna deputize you as a reading teacher, middle school teachers, whether you're social studies, science, social, FIAD. What does it look like? It's just another example of making sure everybody knows and understands their role at the middle school as we address our literacy needs. There's your cheat sheet. So that being said, you walk into a elevator and they can check those boxes. You've, you've got somebody that's really nailed it. It's a pretty complex issue and again, we've just started. Rachel's gonna share a little bit about what we did next and what she's seen in the classroom and some of the cohort meetings.
Yeah, so just really quickly, as Jeff was describing, you know, we have these PDs that are meant to be learning-based, but we also want them to have takeaways and things that they can see themselves actually applying in their classroom and working on with students. And so after the PD on that January day, we had them go back to their cohorts and Jeff had articulated kind of what we have been doing to try and address our literacy scores, you know, fall 2021, probably previously and then up until today. And then we just kind of talked about what the practices have been and then asked cohorts to just really reflect on what is different about your instruction this year or in the past six months or in the past six weeks? Or what have you learned from this session that will help us get the results to that 80%, that district-wide 80% that we're all aiming for? And so if you would walk into a math classroom, you would see them reading and writing and speaking and listening to each other, talk about math and they're at the boards and they're articulating what their thought process, their critical thinking and they're listening to each other. Our English department is always hard at work, they're doing. Our English department is always hard at work, they're doing curriculum review right now, they're looking at the data to be able to say like where our kids need to be and what they need to work on. They're really focusing on that vocabulary, and that's been a really big focal point for them. And really, we're being intentional, too, I think it's important to note our E L staff are presenting at our staff meetings, because we have a larger and larger population of E L students that these vocabulary strategies work well for, and they work well for everybody. So just a reminder that as we speak through like, oh, this is a strategy you can try for not some, but for all. I think that that has been really intentional pockets of strategies that we've been sharing with them in order to help everybody. Our social studies department is working on vocabulary squares where they would identify different parts of speech, write the definition, use visuals and context clues. Our science department is always really a bright spot, they're continuing to incorporate a lot of technical writing in their lab reports and at their end-of-unit assessments, they're called C E Rs, claim, evidence, reasoning. But that has morphed naturally into the English department also picking it up, the social studies department asking, how can I implement that there? And they're just really focusing on that writing piece of a very content, very vocabulary-heavy content area. And then our specialists, you would walk into a choir room and hear the vocabulary and the reading and writing that happens in that space. Those music classes are very literacy-heavy, they're literacy-based in their content area. And I think that's the message that is in the middle school, is that we really just embrace the content area that we're in, and also are intentional about implementing those literacy strategies so that we can build those scores. So, those are just a couple of examples that I wanted to share today. And that's it.
Questions?
Just going to make a comment that I'm impressed with, how much it has been understood that reading doesn't just encompass English language arts, it's incorporated into all of the subjects, and you guys have shown that you've submitted some great strategies in order for the teachers to be able to do that. So, thank you.
Yeah, we've been very impressed with, and Rachel will share this, some of the best days we have are coming out of the cohort meetings, sharing what the teachers are doing and the commitment they have. Make no mistake, they've accepted this challenge. When we ask kids, what's different? I am speaking more in class, I am writing more in class, there is less lecture, and I'm not getting let off the hook. I'm expected to explain myself, whether I have to articulate it in writing or verbally, one way or the other, we want to know where you're at. That's work, that's work, and that group of teachers has accepted that.
I just think the teaching and learning that we're seeing across the district, from all of our leaders through all the classrooms, has just been truly exemplary this year, and it's pretty neat to see everybody on the same page. I mean, colleagues talking across, you know, telling to their cohort of elementaries, but then talking to secondary and seeing everybody really being mindful that our instructional best practices is a focus. And to walk in, in my role, and see that, I mean, I get pretty emotional and pretty excited of the amazing things that I'm seeing you guys do. And then seeing the teachers apply it in the classroom after, and they're excited. I mean, your staff meetings are truly evident of excitement and people digging into new learning, and I think that's, it was a perfect fit for the district, Cindy and Kristen, to be able to kick off what they've been trying to do district-wide, but then have you guys at that middle level where you're not even, you know, you're not supposed to be reading teachers, right? And we haven't maybe been for decades, but now you guys are digging into it and seeing all the different leaders within Step Up in your own organization, E L teachers were mentioned, and all teachers, it's phenomenal. Very proud of you guys, all of you guys. And that's, yeah. This meeting would have been really long if I would have had everybody, you know, but so we did, we did a mid-year snapshot, so your elementary and high school counterparts should be absolutely carrying you guys, you know, out on their shoulders tonight.
I just want to say thank you for your guys' work on creating an awesome culture with your staff, and what you've got going on with the cohorts and the groups and your leaders, and I can just tell by the smiles on your faces when you talk about it, how awesome that is, and that just continues to funnel down to the rest of the team. So, thank you. That's awesome, because it's a challenge, right? You guys had a challenge, and you're like, okay, let's do this and let's do it together. So, feels good.
It's been good. We meet with that instructional leadership group, those eight folks, every month, and that is fun, too, just the, here across the table from the social studies department, sharing a little bit about the challenges they're having, and they're with being reading teachers, along with the math department. And that's a fun meeting to have, and it's pretty clear when you walk out the door, we're all on the same page. It's a great group to work with.
Learn and grow together, I like it.
I was going to have one more, and I wish, I'm sorry, but I just need to. Sometimes at a board, I'm not sure that you can even recognize how intertwined your decisions are. And so, one thing that you made a decision on last year was school start times. And the unified amount of time that we have across the district, especially at secondary, has increased amazingly. And so, those of you that I know have been in coaching, teaching, professional organizations and working with kids, you understand that you don't just learn from a workshop one time a year. You learn from consistent approach, and our building administrators are using a consistent approach that doesn't affect the families. So like, a lot of school districts, to get this learning in, they do early outs or late starts. And we've done away from those, but we've all, in order to give families not that crazy day of those types of days in the calendar. And so like, that decision has given our people, their PD calendar is robust across this district, and we've never been able to do that. And that is how you make, so some of the decisions that you make, I'm not even sure, I wanted to point out how connected they really are. That one is truly connected. Ebony has made a survey that she's having all administrators pass out at conference time coming up here this week. So we'll find out district-wide families, students in grades three through 12, and staff, what they think, and we'll present that at a work session or board meeting. But, yeah, they're just very connected, so I just tee that up.
Anything else? Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to innovation and leadership. I'd like to welcome up to the podium Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Terry Woodworth, to go over building program staff shout-outs. Laura, are you coming up to rate with them, or? Yep, that's fine. I'd also like to welcome up Director of Nutrition Services, Laura Whacker Hansen.
I'd like to give a shout-out to Ben Gullickson, the night lead at Monticello High School. As you know, there's a tremendous amount of activity there every night, and he just has this way of juggling everything between the tasks that need to be done and the curveballs that get thrown at him on a nightly basis, and being able to just, it just all flows. And he's just, he's a tremendous asset that we have, he's got a servant mindset, great customer service, critical thinker, great problem solver. You know, it's, as everyone at the high school knows, Andy's smiling, it's just, it's a hop and building, and to be able to make sense of it all each and every night, it's a tremendous ability that he has, so I'd like to give him a shout-out.
I would like to give a huge shout-out to Beth Deloche. She is one of our incredible cook's helpers at Monticello High School. Beth is the definition of hard work and dedication. She consistently goes above and beyond to support our students, ensuring that every student who comes through the door has an excellent experience in the cafeteria. Her passion for helping others shines through in everything she does, and her infectious positive attitude makes the school environment brighter for both students and all of our staff. Beth is the ultimate team player, she's always stepping in when needed and offering a helping hand without hesitation. Her hard work and commitment does not go unnoticed, she makes everyone around her feel appreciated and valued. Whether it's her warm smile, her willingness to do whatever it takes to make our school a better place, Beth is truly an invaluable member of the Monticello Nutrition Services team. So I just want to say thank you to Beth for everything that she does, she makes a difference every single day. Her kindness, enthusiasm, and dedication are deeply appreciated by me and all of our staff.
Awesome, thank you. Like my favorite.
Cindy wants to clap.
All right, and now we are moving to safe and healthy culture. I'd like to first welcome up Director of Student Services, Sarah Walk, to talk about our School Social Worker Recognition Week.
Let's just keep the ball rolling, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, good evening. This week is Minnesota School Social Worker Week, and so we would like to be able to recognize and appreciate the critical role school social workers play in supporting students, families, and educators. As mental health challenges, social struggles, and economic hardships continue to rise, their work is more essential than ever. Through their dedication, school social workers remove barriers to learning, foster a positive school culture, support staff well-being, and create safe, inclusive environments where all students can thrive. They also provide valuable support to administration and staff, serving as a vital liaison between schools and the community. To all of the Monticello School's social workers, thank you for your compassion, advocacy, and unwavering commitment to student success. Your impact is truly invaluable. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Sarah, and it is, everyone within our school district gets so close to the students, and sometimes it is difficult, some of the situations that they have to handle, and being able to go home and then be whoever you need to be at home, too, it's tough, so you're appreciated. Thank you. Now I'd like to bring up Director of Human Resources, Rob Danicker, to go through first reading of policies.
All right. Chair Steven, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. We have 10 policies this evening for first read, and we are currently in our review cycle, we are in the 500s, and so all of these are coming forward as part of that review cycle. Some of them also due to legislative update that occurred in spring of '24 as well. And then just in terms of, I should mention, legislative change that took place in spring of '24, MSBA typically does not put out their draft updates until fall or winter of the following, after legislative season, that is, so some of these are a little bit delayed. So the first one for consideration this evening is Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of People Records. The purpose of this policy, the school district recognizes responsibility in regard to the collection, maintenance, and dissemination of people records and the protection of privacy rights of students as provided in federal law and state statutes. This one is coming forward because of review cycle and legislative update, as I mentioned. Minnesota has very strong people record data privacy laws, so this policy itself is 15, excuse me, 30 pages long, 15 pages double-sided, so quite extensive. There were no significant major, major changes, but any questions from the board on this one at all? All right, the next one is 519, Interviews of Students by Inside Agencies. And so the purpose of this policy is there are occasions in which persons other than school district officials and employees find it necessary to speak with a student during the school day. Student safety and disruption of this educational program is of concern to the school district. The purpose of this policy is to establish the procedures for access to students by authorized individuals during the school day. This one is coming forward due to the review cycle alone, however, it has been, the topic has been somewhat in the news recently. And so, of note is that this policy, the practices of our administrators in the district don't really change regardless of federal determination of which law enforcement entities might arrive at a school doorstep. So, that's the good news, our policy procedures remain the same on that. Any questions from the board on 519? No. Okay, next is Student Disability Nondiscrimination, and this is coming forward through review cycle timeline, but also legislative update in spring of '24. The purpose of this policy is to protect students with disabilities from discrimination on the basis of disability, and to identify and evaluate leaders who, within the intent of Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Section 504, need services, accommodation, or programs in order that such learners may receive a free, appropriate public education, otherwise known as FAP. Fairly straightforward, the changes were not significant in nature. Okay, moving on. Next is 525, Violence Prevention, and this is applicable to students and staff, and that bracketed kind of subtitle is necessary because this is Policy 525, and 500s are typically the student sections of policy. But again, this one would be applicable both to students and staff. This is coming forward due to our review cycle. The purpose of this policy is to recognize that violence has increased and to identify measures that the school district will take in an attempt to maintain a learning and working environment that is free from violent and disruptive behavior. The school board is committed to promoting healthy human relationships and learning environments that are physically and psychologically safe for all members of the school community. It further believes that students are the first priority, and they should be protected from physical and emotional harm during school activities and on school grounds, buses, or field trips while under student district supervision. And this one, I might have mentioned, is coming forward because of our review cycle, so no legislative changes on this one. Moving forward to 526, this is Hazing Prohibition, again, coming forward due to our review cycle. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe learning environment for students and staff that is free from hazing. Hazing activities of any type are inconsistent with the educational goals of the school district and are prohibited at all times. And so this is one of the cornerstone behavior pieces that's in the student section of the policies, hazing, bullying being the two major ones. Any questions from the board on this one? Okay. Moving forward to 528, this is Student Parental Family and Marital Status Nondiscrimination. This is coming forward due to our review cycle. The purpose of this policy, students are protected from discrimination on the basis of sex and marital status pursuant to Title IX of the Educational Amendments of 1972 and the Minnesota Human Rights Act. This includes discrimination on the basis of pregnancy. The purpose of this school district policy is to provide equal educational opportunity for all students and to prohibit discrimination on the grounds of sex, parental, family, or marital status. And then viewers may remember, and audience members may remember that in February, we updated our Title IX policy in itself, so this goes hand-in-hand with that one. Any questions from the board on 528? Earring on. We'll move on to 529. This is Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students. This is coming forward due to our review cycle work. The purpose of this policy is as follows, in an effort to provide a safe school environment, the assigned classroom teacher and certain staff members should know whether a student to be placed in the classroom has a history of violent behavior. Additionally, decisions should be made regarding how to manage such a student. The purpose of this policy is to address the circumstances in which data should be provided to classroom teachers and other school staff members about students with a history of violent behavior, and to establish a procedure for notifying staff regarding the placement of students with a history of violent behavior. And so this policy goes hand-in-hand with 515, which was the first one I mentioned tonight. Again, Minnesota has very strong people data privacy records, however, approximately 10 to 15 years ago, years ago, the legislature carved out this piece from that privacy. And so, students with a history of violent behavior, and that's defined as, students will be considered to have a history of violent behavior if incidents of violence, including any documented physical assault of a school district employee by the student, have occurred during the current or previous school year. And so if the legislature carved this out of the data privacy, so that schools and school administrators could let their staff know if students in their space or under their supervision have that history. Any questions from the board on 529? Okay. Moving on to 530, this is Immunization Requirements. This is brought forward because of our review cycle work. Fairly straightforward, but the purpose of this policy is to require that all students receive proper immunizations as mandated by law to ensure the health and safety of all students. And so immunizations are mandated by law for folks in the school environment, however, there is also an opt-out option, and that is articulated within the policy as well. Any questions from the board on 530? Okay, we'll keep it moving. Number 531, The Pledge of Allegiance, and this is coming forward due to review cycle. I also want to mention that there was no changes to this policy or through legislation since it was last revised in 2020. since it was last revised in 2020. The purpose of this policy is as follows. The school board recognized the need to display an appropriate United States flag and to provide instruction to students in the proper etiquette, display, and respect of the flag. The purpose of this policy is to provide for recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance and instruction in school to further than Ed. And in Minnesota law, the idea, the concept is that the Pledge of Allegiance will be recited one or more times each week. Any questions regarding 531? Okay. And finally, 532, this is the Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs from School Ground. This is brought forward from review cycle. Also, there were some minor legislative updates to this policy largely due to the work the legislature did in the last two years regarding school resource officers. The purpose of this policy is to describe the appropriate use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove, if necessary, a student with an individualized education program from school grounds. And so in the unique circumstance that that would take place, the policy outlines and defines that an SRO, or School Resource Officer, is a subset of the larger organization of police officers in general, and that, excuse me, peace officers. And those peace officers may be called in to assist the school resource officer in such a scenario. Any questions from the board on 532? Okay, and that was first read. No action necessary tonight. We will bring these back for a second read when the board reconvenes later in March.
Awesome. Thanks, Rob. Quite the list. All right, and that brings us to adjourning our meeting at 7:27 PM on Monday, March 3rd. Our next school board meeting will be Monday, March 17th at 6:00 PM. And following this, we will begin our work session. We'll take a five-minute break and then come back.